Hi Kate, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, George.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Kate, this is Joe, can you hear me too?
I can, Joe.
Great, thank you. George, get any shots yet, your vaccines?
I haven't gotten a vaccine yet, no.
No? Can you see this, Kate?
Uh, yes.
Really? This is my appointment tomorrow to get my second vaccine.
Nice.
I can't tell you how excited I am.
Well, I'm really happy to hear that. I know that there's a, it's nice to have people get those vaccines done.
Turn the sound up.
Hi Nora.
Hey, I shot you a quick email, but I'm having tech issues on my end, our VPN is down.
Okay.
So I'm not going to be able to access the PowerPoint version of my presentation, but I can just do it as slides in the browser.
I can do that if you want, and then you can just tell me when to advance.
Yeah, that would work too. That would be perfect. Thank you.
Mayor, I did get a text that Letitia's not gonna join us tonight, so you'll need a, we'll need to get a motion to excuse.
Got it.
Just testing.
We can hear you and see Chris.
There we go here. Chris, do you have some snowmen going out in your yard right now?
No, too cold.
Oh, come on. I guess it's not good packing snow right now, that's true.
We've got a little dog, Shibu Inu, we have a puppy, and she disappears outside all the time, makes little trails and you kind of see where she's gone. Snow kind of clears around her.
If you go by my house, you'll notice a complex group of paths that have been cut through the yard, we shovel off for the dogs, so.
Yeah. Nice.
And just before we get started, so folks know, Letitia will not be here, so I just need a motion to excuse her when we get to that. He's all. Travis, you're back.
I am.
You make hurt tonight?
Yep.
Woo. Welcome back. This is your official two hat role tonight?
It is.
Good man. Thank you, we appreciate it.
If I could just state to everybody, sometimes you may see me in and out of the picture, off and on, I'm not leaving the room, I have another computer set up where I have some of our packets and agenda on that computer, so you'll see me kind of go over and look at it, I don't think I'm leaving the room all the time.
No worries. Alright, does everybody else have seven o'clock? I say seven on my end, so if we're game, I've got seven o'clock, we've got a pretty short agenda, so we might have time to go out and play in the snow in a few minutes. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February the 15th, 2021, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council, I'll call this meeting to order. Travis, if we could please get a roll call.
Jeff Arnold?
Here.
Chris Campbell?
Here.
Joe Reeser?
Here.
Steve Schleck?
Here.
George Sleeper?
Here.
Letitia Wilkins? Scott Smith?
Here.
This is George Sleeper, I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Wilkins.
This is Joe Reeser, I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to excuse Letitia Wilkins, roll call please.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, that takes us to the approval of the agenda, just need a motion in a second.
Steve Schleck, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
This is George Sleeper, I second.
We have a motion in a second, any changes requested? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda, roll call please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, that takes us to our update from County Commissioner Gail Patterson-Gladney. Good evening, Gail.
Good evening. Yes, we have some news from the county, the recreation plan update commissioners approved the updated five-year recreation plan for the county, and this plan permits local units of government who do not have their own recreation plans to apply for recreational type grants from the state gas and oil reserve fund. And then the board of commissioners accepted the resignation of Jeffrey Moffett and appointed Todd Hackenberg to complete the unexpired role commissioner term of Mr. Moffett. Commissioners had no objection to the establishment of two rehabilitation districts, one in the village of Paw Paw and the other in South Haven Township. And in case you're not aware of it, the Hartford location of the Van Buren-Cass district health department will be moving March 25th and March 26th to a new location in Lawrence, Michigan. And also the Matteawan facility will be moving there also. And then the last item is the positive cases for COVID-19 in Van Buren County, they are a little lower than what I reported last time because those were cases that were probable and confirmed, but these are the confirmed cases for COVID-19, 4,603, and then the deaths are 85. Are there any questions?
Any idea how many vaccinations have been doled out in the county yet?
No, I don't, but that's a good question, I like to know that too. Okay, I'll try to get that for you, Mayor.
There you go, yeah, that's the good number we like to hear.
Okay, alright, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Gail, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Well, that takes us to the consent agenda items A through D.
It's George Sleeper, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D.
Steve Schleck, I'll second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck? Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilken, sorry, Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, that takes us to new business, the city council will be asked to approve the appointment of Nancy Nelson, the local development finance authority and Brownfield redevelopment authority as the South Haven Public Schools representative.
This is George Sleeper, I make a motion to confirm Nancy Nelson as the South Haven Public Schools representative on the local development finance authority, LDFA board.
This is Jeff Arnold, I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. Kate, you want to say anything? I mean Nancy, this is a school representative, obviously, so other than to say that she's a South Haven Public Schools employee replaces.
Kathy Piles, sir. So the school has two seats on the LDFA, and Kevin Schooly is one of the members, and the other position was held by the previous finance director Kathy Piles. And Nancy has, is their new finance director and has been appointed by their representatives to the second seat, and she'll be serving on the two boards, that Griffin is the secretary liaison for the local development finance authority board and the Brownfield authority.
Nice, very good, well we welcome Nancy. Any, I guess we can open it up for any public comments, raise your hand, or what's the secret number, I should know this memory. Star nine?
Star nine.
Star nine, there you go, star nine, or raise your hand if you got a question. Any council questions while we're waiting for any public? Discussion, probably not too much public discussion. Alright, looks quiet. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Next item, city council will be asked to approve special event application 2021-02 Icebreaker 2022, not this year's, to occur Friday, February the 4th, 2022, at 5:00 PM and run through 3:00 PM on Sunday, February the 6th, 2022, at various locations in the central business district and Riverfront Park.
This is George Sleeper, I make a motion to approve special event 2021-02, which is the Icebreaker 2022, occurring Friday, February 4th through Sunday, February 6th.
This is Chris Campbell, I'll second.
Very good, we have a motion, we have a second. Again, public comments are star nine, or you can raise your hand. Kate, this is one of the first ones, right, applications for next year, this is hopeful. By then.
That's our hopeful prayer. We have, of course, we did not have Icebreaker this year, obviously with, there was just too much going on and not enough things could open up, but Kathy has prepared a new application for the 2022 Icebreaker, I can share my map and maybe Kathy can talk about some of the things that we will be doing in this, this new video, I'm sorry, this 2022 Icebreaker. Wrong thing, sorry about that. And Kathy, if you want to go ahead and explain what's going on here.
Sure, be happy to. Can you hear me okay?
We can, good evening Kathy.
Hey, hi everyone, it's good to see humans.
Amen.
Oh my goodness, well listen, we're certainly, as Kate said, remaining hopeful, so we're gonna go forward and plan as though everything's gonna be fine, and hopefully it will be, so as we have in years past, we'll have the horse wagon rides, and those will take place right in the downtown, the ice blocks, the heat the streets fundraiser for the Boy Scouts, the cardboard sled race, this year we would have had snow, we could have done that just fine. So the things that we will be willing to continue to keep our close eye on throughout the year would be, you know, any guidelines that are in place, any concerns, you know, regarding groups of people, gatherings, all those kinds of things, because we realize, you know, this could change quickly, and if so, then we'll revise this and come to you with any changes, but I can tell you this, that we will be very cautious and mindful of guidelines that are in place, so this is possibly a work in progress.
Okay, well thank you, is there any questions, sir?
Council, any questions of this very timely application?
Yeah, I would say, I, you know, I think it's, it sounds very likely that we wouldn't have too much problem, I guess St. Joe and Grand Rapids, I believe, ran one a weekend or two ago, and I understand it went pretty well. So we obviously will have to wait and see what happens through next winter, but I think it was a good idea to get it in now, and makes it easier for us in the summer too, so. Thank you.
For sure, good comments. If there's no other council comments, do we have any, anybody raise their hand or any call, any messages on star nine?
Yes, I don't see anyone with their hand raised, and no one has dialed star nine.
Okay, perfect. Well Kathy, as always, it's fantastic to work with you, and we appreciate all of the work that goes into this, I know this is not easy, and I know it's a lot of, a lot of, you know, work throughout the year to make this happen, so. Anything else for us? If not, we'll vote this out. Got nothing, perfect. Well again, thanks for your time that it takes to pull this off, so we have a motion, we have a second to approve Icebreaker 2022, if we can get a roll call please.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Next item, city council will be asked to consider an amendment to the 2021-2022 fiscal year priorities. And, Kate, you want to just tell us what that is before we get a motion in a second?
Yes, so as we, we covered our priorities last week, and those were based on our workshop, it was brought to my attention that we may have forgotten a little bit, that talked about some of our beach and pier safety protocols that we're reviewing. So the language that came out of that, that I omitted on accident, was city leadership will actively investigate best management practices and explore opportunities for improvements regarding beach and pier safety protocols.
Perfect, thank you. So on that note, let's get a motion in a second, then we can have some discussion.
This is George Sleeper, I make a motion to amend the adopted priorities for fiscal year 2021-2022 to include the additional bullet point under priority number eight, parks, public spaces, and community recreation improvements.
Steve Schleck, I'll second.
Very good, we have a motion, we have a second, again star nine, or raise your hand for the public. Kate, you mentioned your part, I will echo that, and I specifically had mentioned, I know there's a fair amount of work being done on this, that we should include this, I know we had discussion, I apologize, I didn't, I think I just read through them, I must have thought I read it, but I missed it, so I'm willing to amend them, so I would, I would be in favor of this, so any other council thoughts, comments? All is quiet, perfect. Any raised hands, I'm not seeing any, or calls?
No raised hands and no star nines.
Perfect. We have a motion, we have a second, well let's do a roll call.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Next, city council will be asked to approve easements for sidewalk drainage and temporary grading for the construction of the Phoenix Street Bike Path Extension Project in front of Sherman's Dairy Bar, and authorize the mayor to execute the necessary documents.
This is George Sleeper, I make a motion to approve the easement for sidewalk drainage and temporary grading for the construction of the Phoenix Street Bike Path Extension Project in front of Sherman's Dairy Bar, and authorize the mayor to execute the necessary documents.
This is Chris.
Steve Schleck, I'll second.
Perfect, thank you. We've got a motion, we've got a second, again, public will be star nine, or raise your hand, or waiting for that, Kate, this is a an exciting connection, fill us in on that, if you got a map too, you could share.
Yeah, that is correct, and I'll have Bill Hunter jump in here as well. This is the proposed easement for the bike path in front of the Sherman's Dairy Bar, which is also in the Ellen's Family 2017 Trust, and this is just an exciting development that we are able to extend the bike path down to this area. Bill, do you want to give more details on that?
Yes, thanks Kate, this is a result of an application to, this bike path started, staff applied for a CMAC funding for the bike path from 73rd to veterans. Later on, that same year, we applied for small urban, so during the construction of this bike path, we'll also be resurfacing the road on Phoenix from 73rd to Veterans. Later on that same year, we applied for small urban. So during the construction of this bike path will also be resurfacing the road on Phoenix from seventy third. To seventy first. So uh, both of these jobs, of course, are federal funds. Anytime you're dealing with the federal funds, um, and doc and that also overseeing this, they require actually the right of ways to be certified. And all easements that are needed be acquired using a fair called a fair market value. So we have to hire actually a third party, actually, which was um landmark Land Matters LLC to come in and negotiate. And um, they did a great job negotiated debt in front of the city council, uh permanent easement and uh two temporaries. That's gonna cover actually the uh, the walkway fifteen foot out in front of Sherman Dairies as well as two uh, two uh, two temporary, two gratings and two temporaries for storm um structures. And we did uh reach out and um, uh with a and Sherman Dairy, which is owned by the Ellen's Family Trust. Uh, they did generously donate actually this. So the fair market value came to uh thirty thousand six hundred dollars. So um, if city council has and we're expecting actually the construction for this project to be the fall of twenty twenty one. So if city council has any questions on the temporary permanent um easements, be more than happy to answer.
And you know, and that's seeing anything right now. George, go ahead.
I I just wanna uh say I appreciate the property owner uh being able to support this effort. I know this is something that has been tried uh for a while and I'm glad we're finally at this point.
I would agree and maybe something we could look at just to maybe. In the future, maybe some recognition plaque or something near the bike path that recognizes the family's donation. So we could, that could be discussed at a future date, but it would be nice to recognize their generosity. And I should see this done. So anything else? We didn't have any public call ins, no hands up. So we're in the. All right. This is good stuff. I appreciate it. We have a motion. We have a second uh to get these sidewalk easements approved. All in favor, we just need roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Next city council be asked to receive an update on invasive species in the area from the uh. Southwest by Southwest Corner Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area, C I S N A Coordinator Eleanor Solaq, and then she is on the phone. Hello?
Hello.
Evening and thanks for joining us.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much for having me. I'm glad to come here and talk to you about some of the projects we're currently working on.
Let me get. Let me get the screen shared for you, Nora.
Perfect, thank you. Alrighty, so. Yep, it looks great. Um, so I wanted to come here tonight and just give you guys a quick update about the CISM program, some of the things we're working on and some of the species in particular that we want residents and the council to be aware of. So first things first, if you ever have any questions, please do feel free to reach out to me. I work out of the Van Buren Conservation District Office, uh, which is physically located in Paw Paw, though um, we're still working remote primarily. But you can reach me at the office number there, the two six nine six five seven four oh three oh, we're at extension five. Um, or as always at emails, that's invasives ed at van beer and C D dot org. Please do always feel free to reach out with questions, no matter what those are. So a little bit of overview, the CISM is a program that was started in twenty sixteen with uh funding from the Michigan Invasive Species Grant Program. That's a general fund program out of the state that is managed by D N R Eagle and M D R to try and help with invasive species issues throughout the state. CISM's or Cooperative Invasive Species Management Areas work to really be a local resource for folks in managing these things. So we cover Van Buren, Marion and Cass counties. And the idea is that it sometimes can be intimidating or difficult to work with someone at the state on these issues. We want someone that's able to go out and take a look more immediately. Uh, but when you're managing invasive species, you kind of have to work at scale because if we have uh Japanese knotweed right on the county line between Van Buren and Marion County, it's not gonna care. What that line is, right? So it's a universal problem that we have to work together. So we work with assistance in identifying, mapping and managing these species. So for instance, we offer free home visits to any resident in our area. If they have something on their property and they need to figure out what it is, they can give us a call. Uh, we currently have a grant to increase signage and decontamination opportunities for recreation. And then lastly, we have treatment funding for uh two species, so that is Japanese stilt grass and kudzu. We could go to the next slide. So the big project that I want to talk to you guys tonight is about hemlock willia delgen surveys, which we are currently in our third year actually of doing in the wintertime. Uh, hemlock trees are a very, very important species in Michigan, especially on our dunes. So we're at the very southern extent of this tree species range here in Southern Michigan. And where we see them a lot are on our dunes and on the river corridors. So they're really important in stabilizing banks and stabilizing our dune systems. They also are really good at keeping things cool underneath their canopies because if you've ever seen a hemlock tree, they have these really beautiful dense canopy, which means they are really important for um a lot of sports fish. They keep the rivers cooler. And so if we lose our hemlocks, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble. Uh, they're also a really popular landscaping tree. So we see them fairly frequently in town or at um condo associations, those kinds of things as well. And so it could be a very, very expensive problem from a landscaping perspective if we lose our hemlock trees. So what we are serving for is what's on the next slide, which is hemlock willia delgen. It's this tiny little insect that uh basically feeds on the sap that is produced by the tree. And it will kill the tree in about five to ten years after infecting it. And so hemlock trees are really, really long-lived species. They get absolutely enormous. But unfortunately, we're losing some of these giants in our woods to this species. So it was first found in Michigan twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen in an established population, even though it's been out on the east coast for about fifty years. So this insect, the biggest problem we have is that it moves really, really easily. It's so small that if you brush against an infected tree, when it's in a crawling period, you can get it on your clothing and then brush up against an uninfected tree and move it with you. So we are seeing a pattern where it is kind of moving um along areas where peoples are driving as well, right? So if your truck, you back it into a camping spot and you hit some hemlock branches that might be infected, you're going to carry that adalgid to the next place you take your truck. Whether that is a hiking trail or your next camping spot or back home. So we want to be very, very careful with how we survey for hemlock willia delgen, just why we do it in the winter. So this little white fuzzy mass that you're seeing at the base of those needles, those are actually the adalgids themselves. They create this little waxy coating to protect themselves in the winter. And so that's what our technicians are looking for. So on the next slide, we have an example of our technicians doing one of these surveys. They're very quick, they're very low impact. And all they do is they go and they turn over the branches of hemlock trees looking for those adalgids. We have not found any in Van Buren and Marion Counties in the last two years, which is very, very relieving. Uh, but we're still making sure that they haven't spread further. If we do find one, we will take a sample and send that in to M D R or the Department of Ag and Rural Development for confirmation that it is what we're looking at. And then we will be able to confirm that that's what that species is. So this year we are again offering these absolutely free of charge to all of our residents as well as businesses. If you have like a campground. Would be a really considered a really high priority area. We're also working with a lot of our local power plants because they are right there on the line. Uh, please do reach out. We're also covering elegant cat this year. So to make sure that that gets covered as well with our partners. So this is in partnership with CISM's across the entire Lake Michigan coastline. So that we're making sure we really have a good grasp on this species. So if you have questions, please do reach out. Again, that's six five seven number uh to the office or shoot an email to our technicians at S W M I H W A at Gmail. So that's Southwest Michigan Hemlock Willia Delgen. It's a very long acronym, which is the world I live in. Uh, the next project I wanted to give you a quick update on is the treatment of kudzu. So you have another grant through the Michigan Invasive Species Grant Program to deal with kudzu, which is the vine that ate the south, right? So this is. The invasive species that when I started this job in twenty sixteen, people would say, well, at least we don't have kudzu. And I can't say that anymore, which is very sad. Uh, so we have four of, I I apologize for that type of, we have four of the six known infestations of kudzu in the state. Michigan in our. Service area uh county. And one of those locations is on the dune at uh just across the street from Kid Corners Park. So that was located by a resident in the fall of twenty. Nineteen, uh, and they had it submitted to the herbarium at University of Michigan, who collects samples to kind of to keep track of where things are. Um, and then we were able to confirm that this spring and work with uh the city to get that treated under a contract to manage the Japanese knotweed, which is also on that property. This is one that we want to keep an eye out for because it it can be a real problem. So this is actually from our location down in Sister Lakes here in Van Buren County. And as you can see, where it's kind of crawling up all the posts in the background, that is actually an electric electric line, a transmission line. So that's a huge concern from an infrastructure perspective. And then underneath everything that is supporting that carpet of kudzu is dead. It's just been blocked out of flight. So this is one that we can offer free treatment to residents. Uh, we don't have that funding, unfortunately, for most of the species on our watch list, but thankfully with kudzu, we're able to work with folks to look for it. So I encourage people to keep an eye out for even this time of year. It's pretty easy to spot because it has these fuzzy uh seed pods, these brown little bean pods that hang on the vine. And then lastly, uh, the next slide, I want to just remind everyone about our decontamination program. So especially in an area. That such as our entire service area, Marion, Van Buren and Cass. Recreation is a huge portion of of South Haven, especially in the summer months and especially going in and out of Lake Michigan. And so invasive species move very, very quickly with recreation, especially with aquatic invasives can just move from fracturing. So if you have. A leaf of Eurasian watermill foil on the underside of your boat, unfortunately, you can take that with you to your next launch. So what we have is some funding to put in signage for our launches, both for motorized boaters and for kayakers or paddlers. And then we've also worked in the past with the Parks Department to host a free boat wash service with our partners at M S U at uh the put in there at the Black River. Unfortunately, the day we did it had huge waves. So there was literally no one going out, but it's a really good idea that I would love to revisit uh because I think that that has a lot of value. In getting people familiar with the process, especially now, I believe it was twenty eighteen, the laws on moving plant parts on boats changed. So it's now illegal to. Move a craft with any water in the bilge, any water in the line of wells or any plants attached to the boat. And so we want to work with people to remind them of these things ahead of time so that they aren't possibly causing problems or moving fish diseases and also so to save them a ticket and save the C O's bit of a headache. So we want to work ahead of time so that people are aware of this. With that, um, I want to thank you all very much for having me. Again, just a quick reminder of my contact information. Please feel free to ask any questions now. Or reach out to me whenever something comes up as you're ruminating on it.
Wonderful. Hey, thanks for the update. Kate, in the past, I know, can we put this link up there so that folks can? Reference these numbers, make sure they know if they've got questions, how to. Get in contact.
Absolutely. We can definitely put that on our front page of our website.
I think that'd be great. And then you mentioned this, I, we have some signage down by the put in. Are we have, you already got all the signage up at our boat launch?
I believe we put some signage up and I can't remember what we have up there. I know we've worked with Nora um to to come in and bring the M S U folks for the free boat wash day. And I know that we did get some some signage down there. You had some really nice big signs that we've put up about maybe I think it was watermill foil and some of the other invasions to look at.
Yeah, to my knowledge, all of the boat launches in the city are up to date. Uh, but we're happy to get additional signs. Um. Those are ones that have a tendency to walk off sometimes, unfortunately. So we're, those are provided uh fee free from in the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Eagle, which was formerly D E Q. So I'm happy to connect you guys on what.
No, that sounds good. I I have a personal, I love hemlocks. I planted several of them. We've been, I've been watching for this. I watch your updates on this particular topic. And one of my absolute, well, had a whole series of them. One got taken out by a tree limb. And then I had another one that was my favorites and literally it went from green to dead in a matter of two days. It looks like someone just shook it and it just croaked, but it wasn't the bug. So uh, I guess it was just trauma or something, but I do love hemlocks and I agree with you. They're beautiful and we should protect them. So uh. Any other council questions? George?
Yeah, Nora, thanks for being here. I just wanted to ask how we're doing. And I know we've had some signs around town about the Japanese knotweed. And I'm wondering how we're doing in that regard.
Absolutely. So Japanese knotweed is um probably the species we still get the most calls about at the CISM. It's a uh plant that looks kind of like bamboo. It has those. Stalks with the rings around them. Um, as brought over as a horticultural species, it's very pretty, but unfortunately will. Also break through hard top and homeowner perspective or a perspective from infrastructure. And so the problem, major problem is that it spreads through mowing or fracturing. So if you accidentally mow it, you're gonna end up with a bunch more knotweed and you can't really cut it down or or dig it successfully.
Nora, I think she might be frozen.
I think we're on freeze frame.
Nora, you there?
How about, well, she's unf, well, I said, she's unfrozen. We could see if there are any questions.
I would say that knotweed is still one of the large, you can hear me.
Yep.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Um, so yes, the knotweed is still certainly an issue we're hearing from from residents. Um, and we're working with them to try and give them resources to figure out treatment and twist system in any way we can with that one.
Perfect. Well, thank you. I I. Kate, we need any public, anybody raise, I'm not seeing any raised hands, any call ins?
I don't see any raised hands and I remember it's star nine or there's the small raise your hand icon on the bottom. I do want to jump in. I know that we've worked with Nora and uh we've identified Japanese knotweed on certain areas of city property and. I think we are entering either year two or three of our applications for them. So uh, we've been sticking with the applications on the invasive species. Remember, it takes about five years and then you have to monitor for another five years to make sure to have successfully eradicated it.
Yeah, and again, Eleanor, we appreciate.
So treatment of knotweed, absolutely.
All right, any other questions, comments, anything else, Ms. Eleanor, before we let you sneak off?
Uh, nope, nothing, nothing special. But I just want to thank you again for having me to to speak with you guys tonight and to encourage you as always to reach out to the district with any questions.
Sounds good. Thanks. And we'll put this up on our website so people can access the information and get ahold of you if they have questions or to get their hemlock trees looked at. Perfect. All right, let's move on to the next topic then. Uh, we're gonna be receiving an update from our police chief, Ms. Natalie Thompson. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Um, I wanted to just between now and November, um, just start getting some updates um on the narcotics millage that is coming up in November. Um, just wanna start giving some updates about what we've been doing with that. Um, the South Haven Police Department continues to counter narcotics activity. By working with both the Michigan State Police Southwest Enforcement Team and also the Van Buren County Narcotics Team. We have two officers and we have one assigned to each of the teams um that are funded through a controlled substances enforcement millage that comes up for renewal every five years. So our current millage will be up for renewal this November of twenty twenty one. Um, for the past year, uh, we have partnered with both teams um to provide a greater focus on the South Haven community. Uh, the Southwest Enforcement Team, which is run by the Michigan State Police, um, has resources. has resources available to target statewide and even international drug traffickers with ties to our community. The Van Buren County team, on the other hand, utilizes local resources. They target lower level drug dealers, which can make more expedient impact, but does lend to providing information to expand cases beyond. And what we've seen happening is a lot of times that the local team will pass off cases up to sweat and they'll take them further. So so far, the partnerships have worked really well. It's benefited our community. Several of the cases recently have led to evidence and prosecutions of individuals involved in other types of crimes. Very commonly, you know, some of the retail frauds, but even shootings on a murder case. So beyond the two officers that we assign to both of the teams, the partnerships developed have enabled the police department as a whole to build some really good contacts with other resources within law enforcement, DEA, ATF, FBI, all of whom have assisted us over the past couple of years and other non-drug related cases. And just for an overview, the Van Buren County Narcotics Team is comprised of officers from the Van Buren County Sheriff's Department and South Haven Police Department. The Southwest Enforcement Team run by the State Police is a much larger team. It has a much larger area of Southwest Michigan. It's comprised of officers from the Marion County Sheriff's Department, the Alleghan Police Department, the Allen County Sheriff's Department, the Berry County Sheriff's Department, Button Harbor Department of Public Safety, Calhoun County Sheriff's Department, Covert Township Police Department, Michigan State Police, the South Haven Police Department, St. Joseph County Sheriff's Office and the Sturgis Police Department. So as you can see, there's a big difference in the makeup of the teams. And also I have a, just for reference, I have a couple of updates from the Southwest Enforcement Team from November through December. And then I received a second one that includes some information from January until the beginning of February. So just to give a sample, ran of the Southwest Enforcement Team has many more departments, many more officers on the teams. But for the month of November through mid-December, they had a total of 10 new investigations they initiated. And as far as seizures go, they seized 24 grams of methamphetamine, 8.27 grams of heroin and fentanyl, 33.43 grams of crack cocaine, four pounds of marijuana and two firearms. They had a total of eight felony arrests and two fugitive warrants. They were able to locate people on. So that's an example of what they do in about a month to a month and a half period. And then for January through the beginning of February, the teams initiated 17 new investigations, seized 25.72 grams of methamphetamine, 20.26 grams of heroin and fentanyl, 123 grams of crack cocaine, 35 grams of powder cocaine, 46 pills, and those aren't specified, but those are different prescription narcotic pills that are sold illegally, and then eight firearms. So that resulted in 13 felony arrests and two fugitive warrants, again, located. So it gives you an idea. And these, these numbers, of course, are not just South Haven, but they're primarily Marion, Van Buren, some of Cass County. So they're kind of the southwest portion of our area. But most of these cases, you know, involve suspects, you know, drug users and whatnot in the area. So every month that I'm going to talk, I'm going to try and provide maybe information from both teams, just to give everyone a better idea on, you know, what we're doing, being parts of both of those teams.
Sounds good. Thanks, Chief. Any questions from council members on what's going on? Joe Reiser?
Um, Chief, could you just give us some idea? No statistics, nothing real detail. But since marijuana has been approved in the state, since many of the surrounding cities have approved selling marijuana, has it affected our community? Are there more crimes? Have there been more arrests? Have there been any problems beyond the norm associated with the legalization of marijuana, as best you could tell?
Yeah, I guess I don't have statistics to show either way of the impact of recreational marijuana. You know, I can't say offhand whether I notice a decrease or increase in any amount of crime. You know, medical marijuana has been around for a while. So as far as a recreational, you know, nothing stands out that I really have information on as of right now.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Anybody else? I think I speak for all of us. We obviously appreciate your efforts. I know this is an important program and it takes a lot of bad people off the streets, which is good. And I appreciate, I think the updates are good. I think as we continue to let our residents know what their tax dollars go to support. So updates are helpful. So on that note, Chief, thank you for what you and your staff continue to do every day.
Thank you, sir.
You got it. We are now at that point in the agenda when citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. Again, star nine, or you can just raise your hand. You'll be given up to five minutes and we just need you to state your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes and we will. Those, yeah. Everyone could be out shoveling snow.
I'm not seeing any hands, Reiser, or star nines.
Okay. Going once, going twice. Sold. Kate, city manager comments, please.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I did want to just thank again the Ellen Family 2017 Trust for the generous donation for the bike path extension. We really sincerely appreciate that. I do want to call the council's attention to the next Beach Safety Committee meeting, which will be on February 25th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Also, I'd like to let the, I'm sorry, the council know that ice shrink will remain closed while we're at these very frigid temperatures of less than 10 degrees. My thanks to DPW, they've been just doing a fantastic job. I know when I get here in the morning, they're cleaning off a lot of ice and they continue to do so during the day. And then also, we did finally get a confirmation from the Michigan Electoral Commission that the deadline for filing for the primary election on August 3rd is April 20th. So petitions are available at the clerk's office and will must be filed by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, April 20th. If you'd like to run for the office of mayor or council members in wards one, two, and three, candidates must be registered voters and live in the city for a minimum of one year. Those are my comments, sir.
Very good. I appreciate it. And the questions, council? Nothing. All right, we're moving. That takes us to councilperson comments. So let's start with Mr. Chris Campbell. How's business?
It's good. We're closed Monday through Wednesday, but for our two stores, Emma's and Soha, but the weekends are really good. And we're actually going to be doing some moves. Our shoe store may be moving somewhere with our girl store going back to where it used to be because our new storefront is a lot bigger. But we're making a lot of changes. But, but other than that, I really don't have a lot of comments. I say, go visit your restaurants. You know, they'd love to see people right now. It's a great time. And that's it.
I agree. Well, that's good. I appreciate it. Thanks for everything. You guys, I heard it's pretty busy in town this weekend. Did you guys notice that? I had a lot of, a lot of, I know I was, a lot of folks, so that's good. So.
Yeah, my manager told me that he was shocked at how busy we were.
Yeah, well, that's encouraging. That's good. The weather, that's good. Okay, very good. Thank you, Chris. Joe Reiser?
My only comment is I want to thank the Van Buren, Cass County Health Department for all the vaccines they've been giving. I know a lot of us are frustrated. We want it done sooner and more of them. But they're working hard and they're trying their best with limited supplies. So I want to thank them because every time people get their vaccines, they're safer than they were prior. So I want to thank them.
Very good. Thank you. Steve Schlag, how are you?
Good. Just thank George Sleeper for making a lot of motions tonight. I'm dealing with a weak internet connection, so I had to close all my other programs so I didn't have the agenda in front of me. So thanks, George.
I thought you guys just wanted to make me sweat. All right. I would say, how's business? But I think you got ice on your, you're quiet right now. You're good? All right. I appreciate it. All right, George, thanks for the motions. You're up.
Hey, I would like to just thank Bill Hunter and his Department of Public Works team for repairing the water main break on Phoenix Street and doing it without any depressurization because I know that would cause a boil water situation. And I appreciate them being able to make that repair with and avoiding that, that situation.
Very good. And in absolutely deplorable conditions, we will mind everybody. It is no fun working outside right now, let alone in the water. So yeah, kudos to them. I would agree. Mr. Jeff Arnold, how's, how's education?
School's doing well. We're, the falls, winter sports are underway. The basketball team had their first game last Friday. We got some winter fest activities going on this week for the students. So the school's going well, but no comments for me.
Very good. I see you on the ski every now and again, right?
Yeah.
The ski club and whatnot?
I made it out to a couple of the high school races. I was able to root for the kids and boy, they sure do, sure ski well. Really are really fast.
Thank goodness. That's good. All right, I guess that means me. So yeah, and actually there's another ski race this Wednesday. It's the last one of the season, 4:45 at Bittersweet. If you want to come and watch some kids ski in the balmy weather, it's very nice. So yeah, they're doing good. It's their last, last race. And I will say for a weird year skiing feels kind of normal, which is kind of nice for these high school kids that have had such a crappy year. So I'm glad for them. So again, and I also want to thank Bill, all the DPW and really everybody at City Hall that, you know, just for the work they do, especially our road crew right now for keeping our roads cleared off. It is non-stop. So thank you to them. Thank you, Travis, for stepping back in your, your old role tonight. Always good to see you. Reminding folks, please don't park on the streets right now. It is very difficult to plow when your car is out there and you may find your car missing. Get your animals indoors. It's really cold. George mentioned COVID. Just, you know, again, folks, stay patient. I know there's a lot of confusion about how to get the shots. Check the county website. If you're having trouble navigating the technology, please reach out to your healthcare provider, reach out to, I mean, any resources you can think of. I know I do worry about some of our technologically challenged folks out there. If you're having trouble, reach out to somebody and get some help. I mean, there are resources available. So again, we want to make sure folks are getting their shots. So if you're just not understanding the system, please reach out. We're going to have some upcoming proclamations when we can finally meet again. We have a lot of good people, a lot of good businesses. And I look forward to recognizing several of them soon when we can meet again. And then I'll just echo Chris's comment to get out, shop, eat, dine, support our local businesses. They need our support more than ever. And on that note, that's all I got for you. So I thank everybody for your work. Thanks, everybody for tuning in and I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
It's George Sleeper. I make a motion to adjourn.
Jeff Arnold, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Reiser?
Yes.
Schlag?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Thank you again, everybody for tuning in. Have a great night.
Thank you.